Adam didn't want to come back from his honeymoon.
All right. Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this business meeting of the Lakota Board of Education. Ms. Logan, would you please call roll?
This is Casper.
Here.
This is O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Parnell.
Here.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Level.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Ms. Logan?
I would like to have some discussion for a moment though.
Yes, absolutely.
I would like to call for an amendment on our public comment sections to the timing.
Okay.
In case there are additional questions that we don't have an opportunity to get to. We know that this is the final deadline for the V O L signup or V L O signup and several other questions that may be out there. So I would like to dispense with our timing portion of the public comments, just to make sure that everybody's heard.
So help me understand what you're asking.
She wants to get rid of the 30 minute limit.
You want to get rid of 30 minute limit. Sorry, I was thinking that you were wanting to move the last public comment section.
No, I would like to change the time only if we need to.
Okay, for how long?
Just to make sure we get all the questions answered. So however long that would take.
My only concern about doing that is that last time what we found was people kind of kept popping in and out.
Can't do it.
Like after, I would like a time.
Can't be infinite.
I'm fine increasing the time limit, but I would hate to say that it's infinite. And then as we're moving into executive session, another person pops in.
Would you be comfortable with 60 minutes at the end?
I'm.
I don't know that we'll need that much, but that would give an opportunity to everybody to weigh in.
I'm personally fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda to change the public comment section at the last public comment section? So item 10 to be 60 minutes rather than 30 minutes.
So I've made that motion. I think we.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Logan?
Okay, so this is on the amendment to the agenda.
Correct.
And that motion was, this is O'Connor, and it was seconded by Mr. Parnell. So for the approval of the amendment, Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
And now you need to approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
Which you already have a motion on Kelly and Linda, so.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. Okay, that moves us on to item number three, comments, board president comments. Just two things. First off, just wanted to make note that Ms. Schaefer is joining us via Zoom with everybody else. She obviously couldn't be here in person, but just wanted the community to know that. And then second, just wanted the community also to recognize that we all are wearing masks to the meetings. We have our masks, but we are socially distant at the moment, being six feet apart. So we just wanted to make sure that if you logged in and you see us not wearing a mask right now and questioning why that might be the case, it's because we did wear them entering the building, sitting down, but because we're six feet apart, we have those off. All right, Mr. Miller?
I'm good, thank you. We'll just save mine till later to talk about the reopening. Thank you.
Ms. Logan?
I'm same here, no comment.
Great. All right, moving on to first public comment section of the evening. Just a reminder that this is for any agenda items. So if we have public participation for any agenda items, limited to 30 minutes, three minutes for each speaker. You need to state your name and your address. Ms. Logan, do we have any emails, first of all?
We did. We received one email from Suzanne Bruce, 4985 Snow Valley Lane, Liberty Township. She wanted to ask clarification on the student code of conduct, rule one, dress code G. Head coverings and sunglasses should not be worn inside any building. Head coverings worn for religious reasons shall be permitted. Face coverings, mask shields shall not be considered head coverings when worn for health, safety, or pursuant to doctor, government orders, or directives. And when such face coverings only cover a student's nose and mouth and made of cloth. Masks that are designed to be worn for a costume are expressly prohibited without the prior written permission of the appropriate building principal. It says face coverings, masks, shields shall not be considered head coverings when worn for health, safety, or doctor, government order directive, and when such face coverings only cover a student's nose and mouth and made of cloth. I have a few questions regarding this statement where I use the bold for emphasis. And she bolded, and when such face coverings only cover a student's nose and mouth and made of cloth. Face shields are made of plastic and cover the entire face. Can those still be used? Secondly, can face shields attached to hats, and she did include an image, can those be used in younger grades? My daughter entering kindergarten finds these the most comfortable and it is her preferred choice. Thank you.
Okay.
That was the only written email that we received.
Okay. Ms. Fuller, do we have anybody? Okay, Mr. Miller, do you want to address?
Yes, I think the answer to this question is fairly easy and common sense. So we would make that exception or allowance, especially for our younger students. And that's what we've been saying all along. And we're not saying masks, we're saying face coverings. And so in the description that Mrs. Bruce provided, that would be certainly an accommodation that we would do in this circumstance, especially for our youngest students, and the hat is fine too. The sort of catchall there is with, you know, permission with the principal. So the principal could make some exceptions if need be. But in these times and these circumstances, it just makes sense that we help our families, A, stay safe, but B, make reasonable accommodations.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none or seeing none virtually, we'll move on to our board reports. That brings us to the board policy committee. Mr. Miller, I think you were going to give the overview.
I will, and so if Mr. Parnell and Mr. Level can fill in any blanks that I have.
Sure.
So the policy team met on Friday, July 17th. There is one policy. It is a first read only. It's 1520 unemployment of administrators. It's been updated by the Treasurers Department to accurately reflect the contract lengths with the administration. So new language is now reflecting current practice. Sounds like a cleanup item, but I don't want to.
Right, the policy just reflected 260 days for administrators. And we do have some 227 day administrators. So we just need to, like Matt said, have the policy reflect that.
Does this mean anybody who's working those days, or it's just what we're calling those days?
No, honestly, we have had some assistant principals in the past year or two maybe, who have been working 227 day contracts. But we realized the policy said that we only work 260. So we're just trying to get everything in alignment.
And it affected the per diem amount, whether it was divided by 260 or divided by 227.
Yes.
That was it. So he's, Mr. Miller's correct, it was a cleanup item.
Okay, moving on. Policy, but face covering guidelines, so it's not a policy at this point. We won't get the policy recommendation from the O until mid-August. Face covering guideline created by our legal advisors would be in place until the sample policy is provided. Be five separate areas in the policy section, administration slash professional, staff classified, staff, students, property, and visitors. The language is also be a part of the student code of conduct. And there's a waiver available for families to submit to a request for building administration for physical, mental, developmental, and health conditions. So we would make those provisions. Of course, if the governor mandates masks, that's a little bit different. There is also, in the student code of conduct, it's not a policy, but anytime we make changes to the student code of conduct, we've been advised again from our attorneys to have the board approve the new student code of conduct. And a handful of changes are on this separate sheet, which I can go into detail more, but nothing very earth shattering, aside from face covering addition in our dress code language. There will also be a, next month, a new policy that will need to be approved. It's 2266. It's non-discrimination on the basis of sex in the district programs or activities. And it's from the U.S. Department of Ed, and it falls under Title IX. And it'll replace current policy 551722. And it's pretty long. So we're working with HR in that regard, I believe. The code of conduct, there's some additions to electronic forms versus written. Additional code of conduct updates related to, as I mentioned before, the face coverings, language about parking spots, vaping, which is something when we're here, is certainly an issue. Language around prohibiting the recording of fights and altercations, which we've seen on social media. Also, language about recording of obscene material with other devices. Again, these are things that we've seen that we've, we are trying to clean up and address. Issues around fighting and then issues around what constitutes a direct threat. So I just want to point, those are sort of the highlights on the board policy.
Great.
Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay.
A couple of questions, Matt.
I'll try to answer them.
I know you will. What is the deadline that parents need to submit the application for face covering exemptions?
For opt-out, if it's not a mandate by the governor, I will check as soon as possible would be ideal. But I'll check. I don't have a date that I know of unless it came up in discussion.
I would suggest that, and I understand you're waiting on the Ola to issue a formal policy, but I would suggest that we mirror in some form or fashion in the administrative guidelines, standard D, which is, you cannot, I've seen quite a few interesting face masks, and I don't think they'd really be conducive to the learning environment. So tobacco, alcohol, belittling of others, any of those kinds of things, I think it needs to match the dress code. And I don't see that reflected here, so you might want to add something.
Typically like what a shirt, you know, what you can't have on a shirt, same type of thing.
Exactly, but it might need to be reflected there as well.
Okay.
Would appreciate that.
Thanks. Anything else on board policy committee?
Nope. All right, moving on to item B, community engagement committee.
Julie, would you like me to go?
Yes.
We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, the community engagement meeting, to talk about community conversations and made the decision to have just one a month and to keep them on Zoom at least through the first of the year. We thought we had some topics to throw out, if anybody would like to add to that. We thought maybe September we could do, the chamber always wants to do one with us. And so we thought this one could be, September could be the chamber and it could be educating the chamber on the opening and how, excuse me, and how that is going and what our thought process was. We thought would be October, it could be a diversity and inclusion one, and November, finance. And December, we thought we'd have one where we could get some feedback from parents possibly on, excuse me, how the first semester went. And then we'd like to reschedule the January one for the Islamic Center. And then Betsy's going to do a thought exchange for the community on what kind of topics they may like to see in community conversations. One of the other things that we discussed was, in the interest of budget cuts and saving some money, we are not going to use Randy this year to schedule community conversations. And we've discussed that with him. We're going to let Matt's office Melissa schedule them. Is that it, Julie? Matt, Betsy, did I miss anything?
Good synopsis.
Pardon me?
She said, good synopsis.
Oh, okay.
It is really hard to hear Julie. Is there any way to up her volume?
Does the board have any questions on community conversations, suggestions?
That was opening, diversity and inclusion, finance, and then how did the semester go?
And then January's at the Islamic Center, either in person if possible or via Zoom. And then, like I said, Betsy's going to do a thought exchange, put out there to the community, see what else rises to the top. That's all I have. Oh, and Matt's had a coffee chat, attended by 542 people, the last coffee chat. He does very well answering those scrolling questions. I would imagine that would be hard as I sit there and watch him. I can't keep up.
Try to fill the dead air, but thank you.
I, I mean, I think it's smart. I think it's smart to relook at how we were doing it. I know we talked last year about decreasing to one a month, just to maintain momentum and keep momentum with it.
Right.
But not having too many that the communities confuse what, like, didn't we just have one last week? Or did we have one next week? And then also looking at way we can maybe do some cost savings around it, knowing that we're going to be leveraging virtually and.
We are going to have that discussion. We are actually having that discussion. Matt's been playing phone tag.
Great.
So yeah, we are in the process of that discussion, Brad.
Wonderful. All right. Okay, moving on to, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to Butler Tech.
Hopefully you can hear me. Nick, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We have our regularly scheduled meeting tomorrow. Last time we met, I shared with you that Butler Tech was still going to try to move forward with an in-person graduation that has been canceled. They're looking at the opening of schools to be similar to our Plan B. So that will be the proposal that's discussed tomorrow. And they are also looking at requiring masks for all students as well. As far as with the CARE money update, we received some information that they're looking at the last CARES funding. They received about $140,000 relative to Lakota's $795,000. And that equated to about $40 per student. So that was the funding that was received. So that was good news for Butler Tech because unlike Lakota, they did not get a vast reduction in state funding. So our CARES Act money didn't, for Lakota, didn't offset all of the state funding cuts. Whereas for Butler Tech, it was an additional, additional fund. So that was, that was nice for them. So that's what I have for right now. Oh, also the all boards meeting that always happens at Butler Tech, that's also being reconsidered and looking less likely just because of the volume of people that that would include. So I'll keep you posted if that will or will not happen this fall.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All right, legislative committee?
Let's start off with our funding. Jenny, will you address the CARES Act and the additional funding that we saw?
Sure. Julie mentioned that there was an additional 100 million that was requested from the controlling board, and that was approved for K-12 schools. Of that 100 million, our allocation is just under 800,000. So if you're keeping score, the first round of CARES money that we received was 1.3 million. And now this second round is a little less than 800,000. So about 2.1 million in CARES funding. Our cuts, and I don't want to sound like I'm whining, we appreciate every extra funding that we get. But I'm just trying to put perspective into it. We have received cuts as well. The cuts for last year were 3.4 million. We know so far this year, it is at least 3.4 million for this year. So if you add those two together, that's about 7 million. And then we've got 2 million coming back in from CARES. So we're still underwater by about $5 billion there, if you're taking the pluses and minuses. So the CARES funding is helping to, you know, fill some of that hole that has been left. But again, you know, we planned, or we didn't plan, we projected in our five-year forecast that we would see a 10% cut. The 3.4 is about, equates to about a 7%. So we'll see what the rest of the year holds. So that's about all I have for now, but thank you for the second round of funding.
Thank you, Matt.
You know, I don't have anything to add on the legislative piece, aside from that and that we've been zooming with some of our state legislators and decision makers and some of the groups and organizations I belong to. But we had a pass legislative meeting scheduled for tomorrow that's been canceled. And so everyone is just working on pandemic plans. So I'm sure there's something I could, else I could mention, but I think that's it.
Kelly, anything?
Really don't have anything else either. I continue, and I think you also do. I see you sometimes on their, our Wednesday afternoon town hall with OSBA. We can, I continue to do those and listen to what the current things they're discussing are.
Is that it? Okay, I have a little bit of information for the board, just a quick synopsis on the CARES Act. Just for your information, as you're talking about that.
Did we, is this what we got? Did we, we got something emailed?
No, I don't.
This is just something you put together?
You wouldn't have gotten this, okay. I'm a part of the chamber's government issues, and so received some information, excuse me, from Congressman Davidson's office, talking about the impact of the payment protection program on congressional District 8. I thought the numbers were pretty interesting. Kelly, I think you were there for that as well. For this district alone, there were 5,236 loans from 87 communities, there were 185 lenders. And the jobs retained because of that act were 61,487 in this district alone, which was equal to approximately 16.7% of the district's labor force. Average of 12.4 jobs retained per loan. 4,526 of the loans were less than 150,000. The smallest loan was $330. And there were 710 loans that were between 150,000 and $10 million. But it was really kind of neat to see how many jobs were retained through that work and to see that money invested back into our community. So that was terrific. Also wanted to say the Ohio House is out of session until after Labor Day, very possibly until after the election in November. The Senate will be back for several more sessions this year or this summer. We were told to plan on a very actively induct session. Priority issues will be related to economic development and COVID issues, obviously. Still have a capital budget program in place, approximately in a multi-billion dollar budget. 150 million of that program is directed toward community projects. And so if there are community projects that you're excited about, that you feel passionate about, now is the time to let your legislators know that. We should expect to see, I think we talked about this in our last meeting, we should expect to see the Ed Choice expansion program back on the agenda during lame duck.
Oh, nice.
Something more to look forward to, to finish the year off in a grand way. I had the opportunity this week to attend a Zoom roundtable with State Auditor Keith Faber. Was originally to talk about businesses and to get some impact on reopening schools. It went in a lot of different directions. It was pretty interesting. They're planning to conduct an audit on the unemployment system program because there were so many errors that came up and issues that came up during this entire pandemic. He raised some questions about is there no shutdown in the future? Is the data good that we're looking at as a state? And he's working with other state auditors across the country to talk about what's the right protocol. And reporting should be consistent so that we're all able to understand what the numbers are and not different in every single state. I was really happy to hear that. As Kelly mentioned, I have taken part in the roundtable. The last one was on diversity and inclusion. And I also took part in OSBA's mental and social emotional learning training sessions past week. I have a state board of trustees meeting coming up this Saturday, and I'll be attending the Southwest Regional Executive Committee meeting on August 25th. Any questions for legislative?
Hey, Linda, do you know if they've picked somebody to replace Ron?
Yes, there is a new director. He's a former school board member, 12 years. He served on both career tech and a typical K-12. And his name is Mark Ewing, and he's already in place.
Thank you.
And the service for Ron Diver is postponed again.
Yeah.
Until they're able to have larger crowds. That's all we've got.
All right, next on the agenda, superintendent's update on Fall 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Couple of comments about that. First of all, appreciate all the impact or input we've been receiving from our public about our reopening plans. As of today, we are still hoping for Plan A, which is in person with masks, with social distancing, with cleaning protocols. That is what the plan is for today. A decision needs to be made, in my opinion, I was saying August 1st, but that's a Saturday. So I think that should be July 31st as to whether or not we go with Plan A or a hybrid or fully remote. I don't know if that decision would be made for us prior to that date, but that's only 13 days before the start of school. So I've been meeting with, via Zoom, with our county health commissioner a minimum of twice a week. Usually it's more than that when you factor in phone calls and text messages and things like that. I know that they are really concerned still about the state, even though we got a little bit less red. We're still red, but we lost the asterisk or star. So that's a step in the right direction. I know they're looking for some updated information on cases and deaths and ICU admissions. So they're following that pretty closely. I also want to mention that our virtual, or yeah, our Lakota virtual option is up to about 3,000 students. Mr. Coney tonight is my wingman in terms of filling in any gaps, which there'll probably be a couple when I'm talking about this. So essentially, we are opening our largest building with 3,000 students. It's bigger than any of the, either one of the high schools or any of the other buildings that we have. And so the reason why we have that cutoff day of tonight, of July 20th, is you can't open up a building of 3,000-plus students on the fly. So there's some things that have to be put into place, and it's just logistically would be too hard to extend that date any further than what it is now. Want to talk a little bit about some of the information I learned today from the health commissioner, some things we're still waiting to get some feedback on. Our athletic directors have been working with OHSAA and the health commissioners on guidelines for our athletes that have been, that have practiced already, that have started. We also started band today with social distancing and six feet, no instruments, so they're learning how to march. So those kids got started with that today. The health commissioner shared with me that she's still waiting to get guidance from the Ohio Department of Health in terms of choir and voice and singing. And so that they've been working with churches on that, but she's waiting for some further guidance from them. I'm lucky that the staff here at Lakota from the Fine Arts Department sent me many questions to send to her, and she's been getting back to us as soon as she can. In terms of other musical instruments, nothing that you can, that's a wind, or you can use a trumpet or anything like that would be inside. It would have to be outside. And she, when we do introduce instruments to our band, it would be 10 feet apart is her guidance. So I want to let you know that. So we're talking too about can we do choir outside? And that's some of the guidance she's trying to get from the Ohio Department of Health. So I did want to mention that. The other pieces that I'll kind of fill in, some of the things that have come up just for the common good, are special, students with special needs. Their needs will be met through that department, same type of priorities. Their IAPs will still be followed through, just in 504s for that matter, for those students, just like any of our students that are in person for learning. Question has sort of come up about, you know, the rigor between VLO and regular traditional school. I'm comfortable with the rigor for VLO because it would be the Lakota team that is building that out and the teachers. And so I think we're in a good spot with the team. I think they're about halfway through the school year in terms of planning, maybe further. That's the goal. So.
Matt, may I interrupt you?
Sure.
For the question? So that question was raised with me between students attending in school, students attending VLO, and the rigor between the two, and if we're doing class rankings.
Yeah.
And so is there a fairness issue between the amount of hours being put in with VLO and the amount of hours in school attendance? And I think that's a credible question to address.
I don't know if we've had that part fleshed out yet. I don't want to speak for you. Yeah, go ahead.
So the design of.
Do you need to turn your, yeah, so it comes through Zoom, please?
You want, yeah, come on up.
So the, it's a great question. So the design of the courses in VLO is the same design that is being used in the classroom. So the curriculum is the same, the content would be the same. Many of the teachers will be the same between in-person and the ones who are in VLO, especially at the high school level. It might not be every single class, but I think we'll, we'll have a pretty good match between that and we'll keep an eye on the rigor between those two opportunities throughout the course of the year. But it's a good question to ask.
I think it's a fair question if you're looking at class rankings, which do matter in high school, obviously.
Absolutely.
Yep, the other piece that I'll dovetail on this is I'm looking at not having attendance awards this year. I don't want anybody to, in normal times, come to school not feeling well, but especially right now. So we won't have attendance awards this year.
I mean, the other thing too, is we know that class rankings probably mean way more in high school than they do for any college. So we could also consider pausing class rankings for a year as well.
That'd be a good idea.
Something to consider.
I mean, we've heard that over and over and I know many schools in the area have done away with the class rankings. So I mean, it could always be a topic of conversation if we feel as if the rankings aren't meaningful from a secondary, secondary level.
Just wanted to be equitable across the board with student effort.
I will say too, in terms of the Chromebook, so our Chromebook deployment would be for grade seven through 12, just like it is at the regular school. Parents would need to provide, in VLO, would need to provide a device grades K to six because we don't provide K to six take home devices now.
Make it equitable.
It'd be, it's an equitable thing, but we will work with families if they're struggling to make that happen, just like we do in normal times.
Matt, can I, am I to understand correctly, because I had somebody in the grocery ask me this and I think my answer was correct, so I hope so. When the kids who enrolled in VLO, if for some chance, by some chance, we have to go remote again, those kids who are going remote that are currently in school will not go into the VLO Academy. It will be their classroom teachers, just like the spring 2.0 teaching them.
Could not have said it better myself.
Oh, thank gosh. I did be wrong in the grocery store.
And, and another benefit of, of the virtual learning academy or option is that our teachers in a regular classroom setting can still access the content that's built out by our teachers and, and the virtual learning option. So, or remote teachers could do that as well. So that's good that it's, it's a standalone, but.
But it's, there's collaborations.
For our, yeah, for our teachers.
So is our goal to make it seamless if a family transfers back from VLO into the regular classroom?
At, at the end of the semester? Yeah, as long as it syncs up in semester, that's why we've been saying semester, because that would be an easier time of trying to sync that up.
I also got a question, Matt, about NCAA?
Yeah.
And how they would look at VLO versus regular classrooms?
Give that one. Thanks. He had more information on NCAA than I did today.
Yes, I saw that come through. So I can't give a blanket statement, but we've been working over the past week and this weekend with specific families who have that specific question. We've also been working with the NCAA and with some college admissions officers about that same, same question. So I, I can't give a blanket statement to that, but we know that the implications are there. We also know that many of our students who are interested in, in participating in interscholastic athletics in college also come into their junior or senior year with many credits already. So it's really coming down to a couple of classes that we're really looking at and making sure that those are NCAA approved. So we've been on top of it. We've had the conversations. We know that it's an issue. But I don't know that there's something we can say that every single situation is covered completely because there are some situations that might not, depending on the individual student, specific student.
So if I interpret that correctly, you're still working on it? You're aware there are issues and you'll continue to advocate for our students?
Absolutely.
And parents should let you know where they have specific concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
The other thing I would just echo in terms of, of the NCAA is when they're, when they're having issues with their own universities and colleges not being in person, I think they need to give some leeway to K-12 education as well.
That does seem a little bit of a double, double standard, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Far be it for me to tackle the NCAA.
Matt, I had a couple of questions on mask, if you guys don't mind if I keep going here.
Go for it.
So you talked about if we go to a more strict level of mask in school. What about if we go to a less strict level of mask in school? Because it is at this point our local control. Do you see a point where we might back off of the mandatory mask?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the governor or the, or the health commissioner says you don't need to mandate them, you can just require them or strongly encourage them, not require, strongly encourage them, then I would mirror that, her guidance, their guidance in the UC Health.
So it could go either way?
Yeah.
We're open to that.
I'm, I'm flexible in terms of when things get better, we can make alterations.
Can I ask if you know how many districts are mandating mask in Butler County?
All of them.
All of them, I think, no.
That wasn't the original. We were the only ones.
We were the first.
It's not changed.
It's now changing. All of them are. We were on a Zoom call today and that came up. So K-12.
Interesting.
And all the private schools as well around here. I know Mother Teresa's mandating, St. Gabe's is mandating.
Uh, I also wanted to mention to the community and to the rest of the board, if you didn't know it, Matt was on a town hall forum with WCPO Channel 9 last week. It's about an hour and a half and it was actually very, very nicely done. It was Indiana Superintendent Kentucky, Matt for Ohio, and then I don't remember.
Batesville.
I'm sorry, yes.
Batesville, Indiana.
One of our teacher, teacher, uh, union representatives from CPS.
Yep.
And Matt did a terrific job, as did the other superintendents, talking about some of the struggles with reopening. And I think a lot of questions were answered there. If we could post that link.
Probably out there.
I think we did. I think Betsy did post it. Did you not? Okay, I wonder where I saw it. I watched it, so I.
I think it would be really helpful if people could, had a chance to go see it.
Yeah, it was really, it was really.
And then Matt said he would offer some autographs too, so.
Yeah.
I think he scared the heck out of the Batesville superintendent, who was like, our town isn't as big as your school district.
I know, I think he said 3,000 people in the town.
In the town, yeah. He said our town isn't, isn't as big as your school district.
That's it on my questions. Thank you.
Matt, did we, I think we might have actually cut you off mid-presentation. Did we?
I'm, I'm okay. I'm good. I think I got everything.
Okay, I felt like maybe we interjected.
I was looking through and I think it's come up, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Matt? Um, I, I just wanted to say, you know, we get quite a few emails and I'm sure that we all get individual emails outside of the group emails that we get for the board. And I know the administration is getting a ton as well and they're doing a phenomenal job. I know that I had sent one to Mr. Miller, Mr. Coney today and they responded in two seconds. And so I just think it's important for the community to know and hear too, that all your questions are being heard. And there's a lot of thinking and a lot of action that's happening on the backside. And so I know that something might come up and you might feel as if maybe they haven't considered this. I can assure you that every hole that we need to go down, this administration has gone down those holes. Um, and so we're trying our best or the team is doing their best to get that information out to you. Um, I was talking to somebody the other day and just wanted to reassure them that the reality is, is that we have never opened up a school district in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of changing guidelines. And so the work that's being done is ever evolving and we do have the kids' interest in heart, like the best in mind. And so we appreciate grace on our community's part and we appreciate our administration that's working hard to get the answers and to navigate through them. And this is going to be changing. Things are going to change. And so I know it's super difficult. I know that from just a perspective of us and childcare, like it's hard to make decisions. It's hard to figure out who your children are going to go to and not knowing if we're going to be in school. Like we understand that and we get that. Um, we never want to feel like this board is being tone deaf to any of that. It's just, it's challenging.
Yeah, can I jump on that real quick?
Absolutely.
Lot of moving pieces.
Yeah, I just, um, you said something that kind of jarred, jarred something with me. I think back in like March, April and May, we were talking about, oh, this is a great opportunity for, for public education to innovate and to do things differently or, or better. And you know what? I've come full circle on that. I think we'll still innovate, we'll still do things better, but I think people just want to get back to normal. And so I would be, I would love to set up this year at some point where it was like February or January this past year. And so we'll still evolve and change, just like we have been doing. We're doing a lot of great things in Lakota. But I just want to, I just, I think people want some sort of normalcy for their kids and for themselves. And we do too, so.
Sure.
Safely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine. All right, if there's no other questions or conversation around that topic, we'll move into the new business portion. Any new business?
Just a question about our meeting date.
Okay.
You want to discuss that now for July 31st?
Oh, yeah, we absolutely can. So I had sent out an email with the agenda to the board and in that agenda email, I had requested that we possibly hold July 31st and it obviously didn't work with some travel schedules with some of the board members. My intent around that was that, and I actually made a note up here at the top and I forgot to mention it, so thank you. The reality is this, if, if the, our local jurisdiction, health jurisdiction tells us that we have to go to a remote learning option, then it is what it is. It's out of our hands. If for whatever reason, we're getting the indication that they want us to move the remote, but it's a local decision and we know how that's kind of been kind of the flavor and how things are happening. All I was suggesting to the board is that we have a discussion around that. I'm not sure if that's necessarily something that we would vote on, but I would like the board to be able to have a conversation around that topic prior to the switch kind of being flipped immediately. So I hit, I, I said July 31st, assuming that we would know something by August 1st, but that date's kind of arbitrary in many ways. I just knew that looking at the August 10th meeting.
Yeah.
That's literally three days before our kids are coming back into school. And so, you know, whether or not we could connect by, via Zoom instead of in-person from wherever we're at, just to have that discussion. I just think it'd be helpful. Um, you know, I, I say this all the time. You know, we, we get hit up from a lot of different people in the community, right? And I say hit up in a, in a way, like it's our jobs, right? They want us to understand what's going on out there. And so just to flip a switch like that without having a board discussion feels, it, it just doesn't feel right from this perspective. But I know it adds layers of complexity to you all as well, like I'm not.
So I, I was saying July 31st earlier tonight, like I keep saying August 1st and I didn't realize August 1st, when I've been saying this, is on a Saturday. So July 31st makes sense. I don't know, is it, is it possible to do like a, like a, like a Zoom or something like at like 9:00 AM on that day for, I mean.
I'm, uh, on vacation and the last thing I'm going to do is call into a school board meeting on vacation, so.
Understand.
The microphone, not about that.
The microphone didn't like that.
Carry on without me.
If we have some flexibility in the time on that day, I could probably work around that, but.
I was just saying like 9:00 AM because that's, I mean, if the jur, people might be out of town and vacationing, it gives them the rest of their day.
I know we are both out of town, but I might be able to flex, but I think it'll be more the afternoon than the, in the morning, if that would be.
You'd be better in the, in the afternoon?
I think so.
I mean, I, I can keep that day. Oh, wait, I'll be, I'll be in Chicago, but I can do anything.
I mean, I think if we remain flexible with it.
Yeah, I mean, as long as.
If Matt is okay with us meeting in some fashion. You know, I, again.
And no, I was just gonna say I can give you a one pager of, we're gonna go with this.
Well, I agree with Brad. I think it's an important board discussion.
I agree.
But I can give you the information ahead of time, so.
So it can be reviewed for discussion.
So as long as we're flexible on times.
May I send something out to you once I take a look and talk to my family?
Sure, absolutely. Um, and, and just really quick, the FAQ on the district website was updated today. So if we have anybody listening about remote learning, or I'm sorry, about going back to school, um, the FAQ was updated. All right.
And, and I just want to make sure no one misunderstood the special meeting that we're talking about isn't so that we can come in and switch to remote. It's that if we need to, it will be there. It could just be a meeting where you say, okay, we're moving forward with Plan A. But it, it's not setting up a meeting so that we can switch.
Right.
If we need to or just to reinforce the Plan A.
Right.
Could just be a last minute discussion.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Okay, any other new business? All right, moving on to treasurer recommendations, we have four, or I'm sorry, three items. We have the approval of the board minutes, the approval of the monthly board reports and the transportation reimbursement for our school year 2020. Do I have a motion to approve items A through C?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Um, the transportation reimbursement, just to kind of give a little bit of details on that. Once a year, we approve families. They get $250 per child for transportation in lieu of where transportation is deemed impractical. So we do that once a year and that's what that list is.
Okay. Okay, hearing, no further discussion?
I'm assuming that's because of the low number of enrollment to these schools, Jenny, from our district.
Are you saying because the list is?
Very short.
Is short?
It seems shorter than normal.
Every year, it just, it just depends. We go through the same process, but I agree, the list is shorter this year.
Hey, Ms. Logan?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on agenda, superintendent's recommendations. See here, we have five items for approval. Personnel items, approved student code of conduct, the second read for approval of the 2021, 2022 school calendar, approval of Lakota School District Resource Officer MOU and approve of donations. Do I have a motion to approve items A through E?
I'm in.
Second.
Okay, do I have discussion? Any discussion items?
Just want to mention about the calendar. So this is, there's been no changes since the calendar was first presented by Mr. Vogelmann on June 8th. Reading his notes, very few comments, a couple of comments about the length of winter break. Comments about, some people thought the school year start too early, start too late. This is for next school year.
Twenty.
So just as a, just as a reminder, eight people liked the calendar. Some people thought spring break was too early, but there are a lot of factors that go into that, obviously. But due to a number of comments, the executive team really didn't feel like it was warranted, warranted a change. So keep it as is.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just a clarification on the district resource officers, Matt. This is not a change in any coverage in any of our buildings and that's not a change in cost or anything like that. This is the same contract we've done.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Not getting rid of us, or is?
Ms. Logan?
This is Casper.
Yes.
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
This brings us to our second public comment portion of the evening. Just a reminder that this can be over any items, not necessarily agenda specific. We've allocated 60 minutes to this, allowing for three minutes for each speaker. Remember, reminder, you must state your name and your address. We didn't, uh, we don't have any emails. That would have, all right, do we have emails?
No.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Ms. Fuller? Okay, Ms. Jackson?
And, and we might want to also just repeat too, to make sure that they know that they click raise hand if they want to do a public comment.
And not chat box.
Right, not chat.
Yeah, absolutely. We got, yeah. Okay, Ms. Jackson, can you hear us?
Yes, Emily Jackson, 9571 McCauley Road, although this week joining from Hilton Head. So first I just want to say that I appreciate the 7/31 July date. I think just a lot of parents have so much, you know, apprehension and it, I really appreciate you guys being willing to do that. Secondly, just again, a compliment for the VLO. There's a lot of conversation on the PTO page and as well as I'm sure you guys are seeing on the Westchester page. And everyone is just very happy with the work that's put in. I have friends in a lot of other districts and Lakota is once again setting the bar, so that's great. One quick question for Jenny. I was on a Zoom with Mr. Di Maria about the CARES funding and PTA. And I, I asked the question, but he was kind of vague. You mentioned, or Julie mentioned that Butler Tech is coming out ahead. We're down 5 million. So if we as parents have questions about that CARES funding and how the districts are able to apply and receive funds, are we contacting him or are we contacting Mr. Davidson and Mr. Lang?
Do we want to tackle all the questions at the very end? Do we want to tackle all the questions at the very end? Typically, what we do is we let all the public comments go, and then we'll tackle the questions one by one at the end, if that's okay.
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Hessler?
Hello? Yeah, can you hear me?
We sure can. Go for it.
Okay. Hey, my address is 5647 Sugar Maple Run, I'm Hamilton, Ohio. I just had a quick question about the virtual learning, which they may or may not have an answer to at the moment. I will have an eighth grader and a second grader, and especially for the eighth grader, I wasn't sure if there are going to be multiple teachers teaching different subjects, or if there's going to be more of kind of a single teacher format, teaching subjects, and kind of what the protocol is for being present for those classes. Is it going to be mandatory? Is it kind of how all of that is going to work, if you guys know that yet?
Okay, thank you so much for your questions. Right, Ms. Fuller, do we have anybody else? Let me say that one more time. Okay, Lisa Myers?
Am I, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
It's Lisa Myers, 5954 Wood Thrush Lane, Westchester, Ohio. I wanted to ask about, if you're having 3,000 students that are enrolled in the virtual academy, will that lower the class sizes potentially of the children that are physically at school? Or would you be reducing the teachers to still stay at the same ratios?
Okay, thanks you so much for your question.
Thank you.
Ms. Fuller, do you see anybody else? Okay. Okay, Ms. Wells?
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Great, thank you. It's Vanessa Wells, 4487 Aspen Drive. This is completely off topic with VLO, but I was actually just looking at the Lakota webpage, and I was hoping for some clarification. In our past meeting, it was decided the public comment would be allowed at work sessions. However, the wording has been changed on your website that now states that there will be no public comment at these. And also, it states that unless otherwise indicated, that meetings will be via Zoom. So I was just trying to figure out, at the work sessions, when you start back and resume things normally, will there be public comment at the work sessions again?
Okay, thank you for your question. Okay, Monica Weber?
Hi, my name's Monica Weber. My address is 6736 Netherland Court, Liberty Township. I'm just wondering about the VLO advanced classes. Originally, I know it's going to be the same curriculum with the Capstone project. Has that changed to separate advanced classes for the VLO's advanced students?
All right, thank you so much for your question. Okay, Nicole Upchurch?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Great. So Nicole Upchurch, 6030 Meadow Spring Court, Liberty Township. I was just, I may have missed this, so I apologize, but I guess I was curious, when it comes to deciding whether we're going to move forward with Plan A, C, B, and transitioning between them, depending on how cases surge and different things, is this going to be a building by building basis, or is it going to be multiple, depending on contact tracing, like when you have siblings that are positive and have potentially stemmed out to other schools? Or is this going to be literally, it's either you're saying all of the buildings are going Plan C, or all of the, you know, is it going to be an entire school district, or is it building to building?
Thank you so much for your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Hartman?
Hi, yes, good question. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Perfect. It's 6513 Liberty Ridge Drive, Liberty Township, Ohio. I have students that are both in junior high and high school, and I know there's been talk of a block schedule for them. Just wondering if I can get a little more detail on exactly what that would entail for them. I'm assuming fewer periods a day, longer time schedules. I just wanted to elaborate on that, and also if any more thought has been given into going Plan B. I just know an overwhelming number of parents that I've talked to that would prefer that for older students. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much for your comment. Vicki Criswell?
Can you hear me?
We sure can.
All right, Vicki Criswell, I live at 6045 Ash Hill Court in Westchester. I'm just curious about the 3,000 that you have signed up for VLO so far, and just kind of like what age they're spread over. Is there like a high concentration in high school, or is it more elementary, or is it pretty even?
Great, thanks so much for your question.
Thanks.
Did you say Hobbs? Okay, Valerie Hobbs?
Hi, I have a question about busing. Oh, sorry, my address is 9876 Creekstone Lane in Westchester. For busing, I just wanted clarification as to how many kids are going to, the projection for the elementary and early childhood buses, is it still two per seat? I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question. Carl Monk?
There, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Excellent. Carl Monk, 6667 High Point Boulevard, Liberty Township, Ohio. Three quick questions, and thank you very much for this meeting. One, regarding Title IX discussion that was earlier, is this an implied statement that the men will be competing in women's sports? My second question was regarding ranking. I didn't understand why there was a discussion of ranking students. It seems to be an implied statement that the education is unequal, or that the students won't be held to the same standards, and thus could be ranked. So why not ranking? That was my question. And then finally, how many students have reported positive, and how many have been symptomatic that have reported positive? Seems relevant to decisions that you might be making. Thank you.
Thank you so much. L. Gerald?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We sure can.
My name's Lindsay Gerald. I live at 7307 Cherrywood Lane in Westchester. I have a few questions. I have several children in different buildings throughout the district. My first question is, how will a situation be handled when a child refuses to wear a mask or continues to remove their mask or not wear it correctly while in class? Is there potential that my child will be in class with children that are not wearing masks? And what is that criteria for a child to be approved to not wear a mask? And then, I've been told that there will be three feet distancing between the children in classes, and I'm curious how that was determined when the health department is recommending that six feet distancing be used. If my child is told to quarantine due to a positive case in the classroom, how will learning be provided to my children? When, I do have a child that goes to the clinic to get medication, and I'm wondering how that will be handled, because I'm wondering if he's going to be exposed to other children that potentially could have COVID, or if he's able to receive his medication without exposure. He also has an immunocompromising condition. And then, what will a day look like specifically for a third grader that I have? Is he going to have recess? Will he have lunch? Will he be in his classroom throughout the entire day? What will a day look, what will the day look like for a child of that age? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Angela Brown?
Yes, testing audio?
Yep, we can hear you.
Angela Brown, 7894 Seaberry Court in Westchester. An extension of a question asked earlier around VLO, the 3,000 students, is it possible to share the composition of the student?
Okay, thank you. Are you still there? Did you have an additional?
No, I think, I think you probably understand the question related to it.
Yeah, thank you so much. Christina? Christina, can you hear us?
Me? Hello?
It must be you, yes.
Hi, yes, I have a question. I watched, this is Christina Suhall, 7007 Kelly Marie Court, Lurie Township, Ohio.
Okay.
I watched Matt Miller on the town hall meeting, and I saw that he stated that the teachers and staff would not be tested for the COVID prior to going back to the buildings. Has there been any rethought of testing the staff and the teachers? And backpedaling on someone else's question, I have a child with anxiety. If I send him to school and he has an issue wearing the mask, can he be transferred into virtual academy if it becomes a major issue? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, Jennifer? Jennifer, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Excellent. My name is Jennifer Ruggiero. I'm at 7574 11th Hour Lane in Westchester. I have an incoming kindergarten, seventh grader and 10th grader. My question is for my kindergartner, what are we doing about kindergarten orientation this year? He is excited to be a Creekside Cub. However, not being in the school, not seeing the teachers, he has some anxiety and nervousness. I mean, as do I, even though we have, you know, two older children in the district. How are you working kindergarten orientation for that? So that was one question. And my other question comes from, you know, everybody goes back to school. We always get like the first month of everybody gets colds, because, you know, that's what happens when we go back to school. So how are you going to handle a typical cold versus COVID? Are you making your children get tested for COVID if they're showing signs of just a regular seasonal cold or allergies? So just a little clarification on that would be great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Tammy H?
Hi, this is Tammy Hatcher, 5935 Oak Grove Court, Liberty Township. I have a child with special needs that will be at West High School this year, and I know you had said you would be maintaining curriculum to meet IEP goals, but so much of that is-
Tammy, you cut out. Seems we lost Tammy.
It's a question about maintaining IEP goals, and then we lost-
More information about that. I am also curious if you're considering delaying the start of school, or if we're going back August 13th, one way or another, and we're just trying to decide whether it's Plan A, B, or C. I would like more information about that. Thank you.
Yeah, Tammy, can you stand for one second, and can you just clarify your first question you cut out?
Sure. My question related to special education is, a lot of it is group cooking classes, it's community outings to learn how to get out around town. It's very functional education, and I'm just wondering how that will be handled in order to still meet the IEP goals.
Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Wells?
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, actually, this, I just was reminded of a question that I did have. A lot of the parents that I've spoke to were wondering if some of the teachers, I don't know if maybe one from a school building, or maybe per grade, could make a video of how the kids' school days would look. I think that a lot of people going back have, you know, what we left in mind, and they're not really sure what to expect for the new school year. So I'm not sure if that's possible, but I know that there's some videos online, so it might be a good idea, especially for the new parents. But just wanted to see if that was possible to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, we'll close public comment at this point, and we'll go back through the questions. And again, as always, if you have questions, obviously specific to your child, that maybe you don't think is kind of generalized for the district, you are more than welcome to email our administration, or if it's easier, just to email our school board link on our website, and we'll make sure that the administration gets that. I know before we tackle some of these, I can tell you that I got communication today from my daughter's school with an FAQ, and many of these things are starting to pop up and are being communicated out by your buildings. And so just continue to check your emails so that you can be informed.
Let me jump into, one of the things, since this is so new, I should have mentioned this earlier, but I want to make sure that I put it out here. Since this is also new for our kids, if we come back, and is our intention to come back under Plan A, we want to do a staggered start, because no one has entered a public school with social distancing with masks, and I'll talk about masks a little bit later. So we were going to do, on the alphabet, we start the school year on a Thursday, the 13th. So on Thursday, the 13th, students in grades K through, what do we end up, sixth? 12, no. From Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday versus? Thank you. That's it. I wanted to make sure I said the break right. So students whose last names start with A through L will come in K6 on Thursday, M through Z on Friday, because kids and teachers haven't practiced this together. So want half the kids there to practice, what does it look like? How far away do I need to be from everybody? And that's to help the staff, but also our kids stay safe. So we're going to do that. So that's grades, and then that's grades K through six. Grades seven through 12 will be in that block schedule format, and they're going to go A through L, and we're going to send this all out tomorrow. We're going to shoot a video. We're going to put the information out tomorrow. A through L would come on the 13th Thursday, and then Monday, and then M through Z will be on Friday, the 14th, and Tuesday. So because of the block scheduling, they're going to need four days to get that done. Again, same type of thing. We haven't done this. We're, fumbling is not the right word, but we're trying to figure out how far apart we need to be instead of our kids. And so we want to be safe about it, and want to phase it in, so that we're more used to what the parameters will be. What does bathroom break look like when you're six feet apart from somebody else? What does the cafeteria look like? And so to make that more manageable for our teachers, for our administrators, and quite frankly, for our kids, we want to make that happen. So it'll be a slight phase in at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Should have mentioned that earlier. It popped up through the conversation, so.
Thank you. So what I'll do is, I'll just hit higher level topics here, and of course, my fellow board members, if I don't get something, just ask it. There were multiple questions about VLO. There was questions around, will they have a single teacher, multiple teachers, kind of that communication structure, I think. Will it decrease class sizes if we have 3,000 students during the VLO? Does that mean that our kids, or like my child that might be going into the building, will they be in a smaller class? There was questions about the advanced placement classes, which I'm sure you can tackle. There is a question around spread against divisions, meaning of the 3,000 students, what does that look like? How many are in high school? How many are in elementary? How many are in early childhood? At least that's how I took that question.
I'll let him start answering and keep up with your questions.
I was going to say, maybe let him answer, maybe let him answer as you ask. I'm assuming he's heard all these questions.
I mean, I wrote them down and wrote down my answers. Maybe you should like check me and Keith, because if we don't mention it, then, when you see it, cross it off.
Go for it.
Do you want to tackle, the first one was about CARES money.
Sure. So Emily, I know Emily Jackson asked about the CARES funding, but I wasn't exactly sure what her question was, but I can speak a little bit to it. So the CARES funding that we receive, we, it is, it is restricted on how we can use that money. We have to set up a budget. We have to set up a budget. It goes through, there's a portal with the Ohio Department of Education where we have to submit a budget. They have to approve it, yada, yada, yada. But if there are questions about, you know, hey, what are we looking to spend this money on or whatever? Emily, feel free to reach out to me. If you have more specific questions, email me and we can have a bigger conversation because I know you also mentioned the PTOs. So I'd like to have a further conversation with you after the meeting, I guess.
I interpreted some of that too. And she, and maybe I'm wrong, but she wanted to know who to contact and get.
To get more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I got that too.
I think she was talking about advocacy.
Yeah, well.
Emily, call Jenny.
Call me, call me or email me. Let's connect and talk further.
Great. Matt, VLO, multiple teachers.
So it really depends by grade level. So in Ms. Hessler's question, I think she sent you the second grader and eighth grader. If you're early childhood school, if somebody young, they're going to have one teacher. If you're in eighth grade, it will be subject specific, similar to the same path.
Like in the day.
Right. Keith, if I say anything wrong?
Class sizes related to VLO?
Class sizes related to VLO, it really shouldn't change the class size amount. What's what we've noticed today and people wanted to know, and I'm kind of answering a couple of questions here at once. Wanted to know dis- dispersment, K 12. I mean, there's some fluctuations, but essentially earlier today, we had about 500 students, grade nine through 12. That number is probably a little bit higher now. Grades K through eight, essentially this morning, when we were looking at the numbers, you could pull, just going to say it this way, you could pull one class per grade level, per building.
Okay.
Was about the distribution it was going to be. So in that scenario, you might have smaller class size, but it's probably going to be about the same because we had the same amount of kids. It's just which way are they going to go in terms of their education?
So it's fairly evenly spread across K 12?
With 3,000.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I think I answered a couple of them in that one.
We are going with Plan A, Matt. That was one of the questions. Plan A is the plan we are going for at this moment. We're not trying to decide between any of the other ones. We're going with Plan A.
Correct.
Because that was a couple of the questions and you're not, and Plan A is district wide. We won't have buildings on different plans.
The question about, would you switch buildings based on cases, it would really be district wide. I can't imagine this scenario. I guess there could be one where, for some reason, one building had a specific outbreak. Never want to close that door on that, but it would be a district, in my opinion, be a district decision.
About advanced placement?
Yeah, advanced placement, I mean, we're using Apex when we need to. Otherwise, anything else?
Same curriculum plus a capstone or a different curriculum?
Yep. While you're making your way up here.
It is a, it is a change from what we'd originally said. So the question is about advanced classes and or honors classes. And originally, before we had the large numbers that we do, we were planning on having the regular content taught. And then in order to earn honors credit, that you would do a capstone on top of that. Well, now that we're an entire school district in and of itself, basically, we have the numbers to be able to have honors level classes, regular level classes, advanced level classes, separate from typical classes. So that's the answer. And there was some confusion because that was not our original answer and we've adjusted that as our numbers have grown.
Is there a FAQ for VLO posted directly on the website at this point? And then will it be updated with many of these questions or these questions exist on there right now?
Most of them.
Yeah, we're on version 3.0. We keep adding questions.
Just a reminder to our community that you can go onto our website. There are FAQs related to VLO and a lot of these plans. We really encourage you to look at those because a lot of these things that are popping up could possibly be on there.
The question about transportation, it is still two to a seat masked up. That's a, that's an easy one. There was a gentleman on there talking about Title IX. Long story short, no, it has nothing to do with sports. Title IX was about a policy update as it deals with language about harassment, unwelcome conduct, more definitions and requirements for reporting and investigating complaints. I think we've talked enough about the ranking student component and I'm just not sure what his question was related to that. And then in terms of positive cases, we are not in session. So we don't have any data like that and I'm not sure that the health commissioner would specify unless it really related to school. But since we are in summer and we have a month to go, that's really not relevant at this point.
Mr. Monk, if you have specific questions about the ranking or Title IX, feel free to email us and we can get back to you more specifically on your questions.
There was a lady talking about masks and it sounds like she was worried that if a student wasn't going to wear a mask or removed it. There will be some students that can't wear a mask for the reasons that are included in the, in the board packet tonight. It's probably a health issue related to wearing a mask or some other issue that that child has. So there is a potential for that. If a student is defined and is flat not wanting to wear a mask and there's not an issue, they will be sent home, quite frankly. And that's just because we want to keep everybody safe and it's the orders. But again, if there's an issue, we will deal with it and that's why we have an opt-out form. There was a further question about three feet versus six feet. Very early on, the health commissioner said, if you can keep distancing between, or you can distance yourself six feet more, you don't need to wear a mask. And then it changed to, if you need to go six to three feet, you must wear a mask. And that's why we instituted the policy of must wear masks. So I think that's where the three feet versus six feet comes from. In terms of if my child becomes quarantined, what happens to the instruction? That'll go to remote learning for a specific period of time. Meds, student needs to get meds or is, you know, goes down either once a day or whatever their situation is, if they're going to be co-mingling. We're going to have, this is in the FAQ, I believe, several times as well. But we are going to have two places for students to go. One is where regular meds and regular health issues occur. The other is a potential for a student or staff member that's exhibiting COVID-19 symptoms. So that should take care of that to the best of our ability.
And Matt, just for clarification on the mask question as well, if for whatever reason, a parent finds out that a child has a waiver for a mask in the classroom, are you, if they don't want their child in that room to go VLO, can they move to VLO or what are their options at that point?
You know what, in something like that, I think we just do case by case basis, just get a hold of the principal. I mean, because it could be a little bit different for each, for each case. I talked about composition of students. There was a question about what recess will still happen, socially distance as much as possible. Lunch still happens. What does a day look like? I would encourage that parent to reach out to their principal. I think it was a third grade situation. We are not, this was, came from the health department as well. We're not requiring our teachers or staff members to be tested prior to the start of school, nor are we, can we do that for students? Anxiety about wearing a mask, I get that. And I think there have been a lot of good resources shared out there about getting students used to wearing a mask. And so obviously, and this parent probably was doing the same thing, just, just trying it out for X number of hours or minutes and then sort of building up before school starts. But I think that's, that's sort of the best we can do. I talked about the staggered start. The parent about the special needs student at West, I believe, just get a hold of the case manager and who they've been working with before. And that's, they will be glad to talk to you, Tammy, about making sure that the IEP goals are being met and what that's going to look like for your child this year. And Mrs. Wells talked about a video, what's the school day would look like? And I think we've talked about doing that as well. So that's in the hopper, as it were. There was a comment about the public comments for work sessions.
I think that's, it's updated. Yeah, we do take public comments during the work session.
We, yeah, we updated it before the meeting and that was just missed. No, we have not changed anything. Yes, we are still permitting public comment. But it just wasn't inaccurate on the webpage and it has been corrected, so.
Look at that.
I should have known that. The other, there was a question about block scheduling, so it'll be approximately 90 minute blocks with the exception of lunch block, which will be 120 minutes to allow for the 30 minute lunch that they need, so.
There's a kindergarten orientation question, Matt.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that yet. Do you know, Bets? Here we go.
Okay, and there was a question about how we treat if it's an allergy and a cold.
The answer to that last one couldn't be heard on Zoom.
Oh, Bets, you're going to need a microphone.
She's got it.
About kindergarten orientation.
Question about kindergarten orientation.
I don't remember.
The ECS principals are working on Zoom sessions for kindergarten information. They sent out a thought exchange today to all of our incoming kindergarten parents to gather feedback on what questions do you have? We know there's always questions for incoming kindergarten, kindergartners and this year more than ever.
And Matt, you may have answered this one and I just missed it, but did you talk about if somebody has to get medication during the day? If there's going to be a space that people feel is safe?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Could you address arts and theater and what you know right now about that?
Yeah, just still waiting on the health commissioner to get some guidance from the Ohio Department of Health in terms of anything related to performance inside and with singing. So still waiting from her. We did get some guidance on band 10 feet apart. I did bring up, can we do choir outside or voice things 10 feet apart? And she said, I'll check.
Do you expect to have that answer within the next week or so?
I'm hoping this week. Yeah, I got, and she, our health commissioner has been very good about getting back and being very responsive. And so I have another Zoom call with her scheduled for Thursday.
There was a question about block scheduling. I'm assuming that will be on an FAQ. Did you, did you already say that? I don't see any others. I was trying to cross them off as everybody's talking, which is why I missed that one.
And someone had kind of a follow-up to the class size one. They felt like that wasn't, they didn't understand the answer because so many people had signed it virtually of class sizes were going to be smaller in the building. So I felt like you said they were not, but I misunderstood that answer.
No, no.
You said one class per building or a grade level.
Correct. So the class sizes should probably stay the same. When the VLO students are virtual, class sizes will probably be remaining the same in the traditional school setting.
And it's only one class per grade level.
That's about what it is. I mean, there could be some fluctuations in there, but it should be about the same.
Because that teacher is going with them to the virtual learning option.
Correct.
So Matt, if there are any questions parents have not gotten addressed, where do you want them to send them?
There's a website and the website is. What's the, is there an email for it too? Isn't there an email for it too? Okay, so the best place to get information, there'd be a link to email address too, is locotanonline.com/WeArePrepared, which is also on the landing and homepage of our website.
Say there's a link. Link right on the homepage to the We Are Prepared.
Right under trending now. They could click on.
Take you to that. It takes you to the facts and FAQs.
For those of you that can't hear, the FAQ was just updated today and it's being updated regularly. There's a ton of information on there, but again, anytime, we're glad to answer your questions as well.
Okay. If you feel good about moving forward, well, with the agenda.
Okay, with the agenda.
The agenda. Great. That moves us to our closing comments section. We'll start with Mr. Parnell.
I have no closing comments.
Great. So Connor?
There's a, it's a quote and I'm sorry, it's a long one, but it's been rattling around in my head a lot recently with kind of the start of 2020 and just as all of the local leaders are trying to make decisions about where we are and the best choices for kids and how to keep our students' wellbeing at the front. So I'd like to share it with you because I think it will resonate with all of us. It's from Theodore Roosevelt. "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or how the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, whose face is marked by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasm, the great devotions, who spins himself in a worthy cause and who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who need neither victory nor defeat." You know, he spoke about that in a time that was very different during our world's, during our country's history. And yet, we're here again. And it's not just the leaders in this room. It's our leaders at the state and at the federal level. And it's our teachers and it's our staff and it's our, it's our administrators. And we're all feeling a little dusty and bloody and the school year hasn't even started this year yet. But I just want to remind us that we're doing it for a good cause. We're doing it for the right reasons. So hang in there.
Thank you for that. Ms. Casper?
I just want to, today we voted to accept the resignation of our high school principals, Mrs. Davis and Mr. Carr. And so we would like to thank them for all their years of service and all they did for Lakota. We're excited for Mr. Carr to move into a new position and we wish Mrs. Davis a lot of luck in her position at Grantis Hope so she'll still have some contact with kids. We have a parent who has three kids who went through Lakota, the last one graduated this past June. And he is a youth pastor at a church in Dayton. And he reached out to me, he happens to be my neighbor, and said that their church was making masks. So he has donated, I believe, four of 500 masks each to both high schools, Liberty Junior and Independence, because those were where his kids went to. And so I want to thank him for that. And then he gave me 125, Matt, to give you guys for the central office or however you think you want to use that. And so he said, if we need more to call him, that that's their mission is to make masks. So I thought that was really nice of him. And also in the vein of the principals, we want to congratulate Mr. Brown for being promoted to West and welcome Dr. Mack to East. And we're looking forward to working with both of them. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to go Ms. Schaefer and then that direction.
I want to apologize for not being there in person. My intent was to come down for the meeting. I'm in New York caring for my mom who's 88. But Ohio was added to the not welcome back in New York list without quarantining for two weeks. So that changed my plan, so I apologize. And again, I'd like to ditto what Kelly said for our principals. And also, I know many, many parents are agonizing over their decision for their children right now. I, I still have one in Lakota and my son is emphatic as to what his decision is. So I think if I tried to sign him up for virtual, he, he might disown me as a parent. So I guess it's made it a little easier in our house. But certainly I feel like there are no, no good or bad decisions is what I said to somebody today. You know, there, there are pros and cons to each and we certainly empathize with every single family for all that they're going through in their challenging decision-making process right now. So.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Logan?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Mr. Miller?
Just thanks to the board for their support through all this, because I know that your emails are blowing up and phones are blowing up as well. So thank you for, for answering those and doing those as best you can. And to our staff who are apprehensive too and anxious and we're trying to get everything in place and set to go for the next 20 something days, 25 days. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo something that Julie had said. You know, I was having a conversation with a parent today and it's kind of interesting. I'm sure we all get this. But they kind of look at you and say, so what are you doing for your child, right? Like, kind of like, what's your plan? And so, you know, the, obviously we talked about it, but one of the things I said, and similar to what Julie just stated, is that this is an individual journey and no parent should feel bad about the decision that they're making for their child because every circumstance and every situation in our family is completely different, whether that be from a risk standpoint to just how they operate as a family. And so I just wanted to encourage our families, just like Julie said, that this is tough, it's hard and you're going to feel like you're making the wrong decision. But just know that here, we've got a team of teachers, administrators and staff that are like here to walk the journey with you. And so hang in there, you know, we might look back on it and realize you made the wrong decision. You might look back on it and say, that's the best decision ever. But I guess what I'll say is that that doesn't make you a bad parent. You might look back on it and say that it's the best decision ever, but I guess what I'll say is that that doesn't make you a bad parent. And so just hang in there, do what you need to do. We'll support you. We'll do our best to get you information, but hang in there. The other thing I wanted to mention, just a reminder that our next meeting on August 10th, if the July 31st meeting doesn't happen, is going to be in person. I'm assuming it's going to be in here at Plains, like we would typically do it. We'll be social distance. Masks will be required for the meeting, but we will be welcoming our community back in. I would like to personally have a request, the board to consider that we continue to Zoom through the, at least December, even though we'll have community here to consider still Zooming our meetings and allowing public participation through Zoom. Obviously, we have different risk levels of our community. We have different people that are considering, obviously, VLO, which might not be comfortable coming into the buildings. And so I just want to put that out there. I don't think a decision has to be made now, but I think it'd be in the best interest of our community to have that access to us.
In addition to allowing in person?
Yeah, absolutely.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. So in person for people that can get here, but those that may not still have the cameras set up for Zoom and allow people to have public participation. And it just, I mean, I think a couple hundred people probably have joined. Betsy, do we have a number? We have 200 people that are attending the board meeting right now. So if we think about it that way and we have 500 people join the virtual coffee chat, so there's a desire from our community. I get that we have a lot going on now, but a desire for our community to be able to connect with us virtually as well. All right, that is all that I have. That moves us into executive session. So if I could get a motion to enter an executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of public employer official, we will not be doing any further business when we come back from executive session. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Ms. Logan?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.